Okay, we're gonna start. It is about six twenty-nine. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight to our meeting. Appreciate you. And we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order and start with flexible. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, on the nation, in the power, and for the liberty and justice for all. Tammy, please note, we have a point to note. Appreciate it. And then celebrations, Dr. Skinner. So I'm gonna go ahead and invite Mr. Bonner, Coach Bonner. We're trying to figure out, what does he mostly go by? So he said he answers to all. So he's gonna go ahead and begin our celebrations and then we'll get some pictures and come through the line.
Excellent. Thank you. So thank you, Board, for allowing us a second to to celebrate the great things we do. I've got a couple individuals from Tri-County High School Rodeo Club with us, and they have much more exciting things to say than I do. So I'll give them the mic here shortly. But the first couple of things that I'm impressed with, with all athletes, but especially rodeo. The Tri-County High School Rodeo Club is made up of the Shuse, Jefferson, and Brook Counties. There's over fifty rostered athletes, which almost or more than triples most other clubs that they compete against. So we have a wonderful history of rodeo in our region, and that needs to be celebrated. So we're very proud of that. So athletes compete or compete all around the state. And what I'm impressed with most about high school rodeo is, you know, I can say, you know, I'm a wrestler, I'm a basketball player, and I might identify as such, but as far as being a lifestyle, and you know, maybe not so much. But with rodeo kids, equestrian, they air for their animal year-round. They transport it or them all around the state. It's very much what they do and who they are. It's in their fabric. Ladies, why don't you come up here? Don't stare at me. And so I'm very, very impressed with that and the caliber of athletes that we're putting out. The club, another thing that I'm very impressed with is, you know, unlike a lot of other sports, the club doesn't have a head coach per se. So these individuals are in charge of securing their own training, getting themselves going. They don't have somebody there to push them, other than family, maybe. But they're doing all that on their own, and they're very driven, very polite, respectful, dedicated. I just can't think, you know, think enough, that they're they're a part of our program. What we have, who we have here is Emma Brandell and Corley Holiday. And they're going to talk a little bit about the club and how they did this year at state. And then, of course, you guys can ask me some questions. So, thank you. Floor is yours.
Yeah, so we're, I've been a part of the Tri-County High School Rodeo for three years. Um, I don't know.
I have only been a part of it one year. This is gonna be my second year coming up.
Um, but we traveled, my last three years, we traveled all over Oregon, like Hermiston, Clement Falls, Canby, all of like genuinely everywhere. And sometimes that's difficult to do school and high school at the same time. And they have like a summer or a spring session and a fall session. And most of the time, you're trying to do school and do that at the same time. And we're both actually also a part of OSAT and Horse 4H and Pig 4H.
And all of the above.
On top of. So life gets a little busy, but like Rob said, we, it's not just a one-season kind of thing. Like, I have seven horses now that I'm taking care of. And it's not just a, you go to practice for X amount of hours a day, and then you call it a day. Like, these animals rely on you twenty-four-seven for care and stuff. So it's definitely not like all other sports, like some people like to compare them to, but I wouldn't trade it for the world. Like, I like being busy. We're both honor students at the high school, too. I mean, we're very busy, but I don't think we trade it for the world.
Any questions?
Yes. What events do you do?
I have competed in the barrels and poles and the breakaway. And I've competed in barrels and poles.
What's the gender balance on the Rodeo?
Um, I would, I would say there's probably more girls, honestly, in Tri-County, but
almost as many female barrel racers as they are, as there are all guys in the sport, so far.
Yeah, your rough stock riders and stuff. There's not really very many for the pickings anymore. You try, but but yeah, since there is like goats, there's goat tying, there's barrels, there's poles, girls can enter in the team roping. There's breakaway, and for the guys, they have tie-down, tank team roping, and all the rest of events. So in our club, I would say there's probably more girls than there are guys, but it's it's pretty even.
So that's good.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that forward, Dr. Skinner. I appreciate you. Mr. Bonner, thanks for bringing that.
It's my pleasure.
One point four, agenda additions, deletions, revisions, and agenda approval. Ms. Sima, I would like to add an agenda item, please. On one point five, executive session decision on a complaint.
I'm chairman, I move to adopt the agenda as amended. Second.
Okay, all in favor of adopting the agenda that's been amended, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, one, one point five, executive session decision on a complaint. The board met an executive session, just started our session this afternoon, to consider a complaint filed by a parent. For administrative regulations KL dash AR, the board shall review the record of complaints from prior steps to determine whether it warrants further consideration, and if so, how it will proceed. Having considered that complaint and the fact that the board had available all of its information, do any of the board members have a motion that they would like to raise?
I'm chairman, I move to uphold Dr. Hawke's decision in the matter discussed in executive session, and to further find that the complainant has fulfilled their obligation, we consult with the district before elevating the complaint further. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have discussion?
And I think this situation warrants further consideration based on investigation.
I'm not sure if people heard the last part of your discussion. Sorry.
I think the situation warrants further investigation based on the investigation.
Okay, do we have further discussion? All right, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Tammy, please make sure that it was three one. All right, two point oh, approval of consent agenda.
I'm gonna move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All of those? Thank you. We move straight over to Dr. Knox.
Driver's Ed program update. Yes. So this one is is a little strange, and it has some history to it. So just to catch everyone up to speed, I believe it was this past spring, Mr. Cooper, as part of his ESD Budget Committee role, was attending a presentation at the ESD. And in that presentation, I don't know who, someone from the ESD, I got up and talked about how drivers ed is being cut, cut from Kirk County, they're removing funding. And I think Scott, Mr. Cooper wisely said, wait a minute, what's going on? So we have been digging into it. Yeah, go ahead.
I apologize. I skipped someone. That's not me.
No worries.
Uh, did I skip you, Ms. Carrie?
I'm next.
Oh, you are. Okay, my apologies. Okay.
Appreciate you making a missive, Miss Lullback. Yeah.
My numbers, and I was like, I totally just moved right past her. Reminding.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh.
Uh, so, so at this point, uh, I think we've had about three or four, just, I think, the kind of misstep by the ESD allowed us an opportunity to dig into our drivers ed program to see what's going well, and what are some areas that we need refinement. So just to give you guys a current status, a bunch of us met with all the drivers ed instructors locally. The programs offered at Kirk County High School, second period, as well as after school, but it's through the ESD is the one that actually runs the program. This is one of our big barriers that we're trying to solve, is the cost currently is seven hundred and ninety-five dollars per family, which, as you can imagine, is a huge barrier for a lot of families. Students who complete the program, and I learned this, they actually get licensed just by completing the program. They don't have to go and they have to just turn something to DMV. They've passed the, you know, because our people are certified, they don't have to do a test. And they also usually get an insurance discount. So the classes offer mainly second period with mixed classroom, and then there's driving sessions, the max spots. And this was another barrier we were looking at, is the max that our teachers in its current state can fit in there is twenty-four students per trimester. So if you think, it's about a hundred kids a year, if you run, run it in the summer as well, ninety-six total per year. So good news, this past spring, we, the ESD actually applied for an ODE ODOT grant and was able to give ten four hundred dollar scholarships. And from what I heard from the instructors, that boosted that enrollment, where I think we're darn near that cap. But that scholarship is up. And I think one of the things the board tasks us with is to find other areas that we can, and options that we can make sure that all students in Kirk County have the ability or opportunity to take advantage of the drivers ed program. So we have some options, both short, long-term, midterm and long-term. So our limiting factors first, so stacking. This is when I talked to the drivers teachers, when I talked to the ESD about their program, this is the biggest barrier that we're running into, where to become an ODOT certified instructor, it takes, I want to say it's like six weeks of back and forth training, going to Salem and Max. And the pay that is associated with this program from the ESD is really low. So they have to do all this training, and the pay isn't very high for the instructors. So they said that's, that's what's preventing people from us from getting more instructors. There also is a factor of the number of seats in the car. So these are, if you remember, like drivers ed, they both have a, there's like, the passenger side has a brake, too. So just in case things get a little hairy. So so there's only so many seats in those cars. It's usually one instructor and then three additional students. And then finally, but like, kind of all goes together around the costs, where the ESD, this is a self-funded program, so they have to have it operate in the black. So I think that's what we're seeing in the cost. So high. And another interesting thing on that seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, the ESD actually says it's a thousand dollars, but they're already discounting it for for students. So it's a, it's an extremely expensive thing to run for those factors. So here's what we've got, short term. We have identified a number of sources where we're going to be able to copy or provide scholarships at the same level for this fall. The instructor said that was a big boost to get enrollment up. So we'll look at probably around four thousand dollars of scholarships, and figuring out how to best distribute that. So that'll bring the cost down. So that's a short-term solution. We can start that tomorrow. Midterm. Now, this is where I think we have some, some opportunity is right now, one of the things the board talked about was, we want every kid to have these basic skills and opportunity. The biggest limiting factor is getting these certified trainers. We, as a district, could decide that we want to just run our own program, and we could provide a driver's ed program with our staff, their set curriculum that we could use. We have a couple of driving simulators, so it wouldn't be as limiting as as the car. And we could offer that as a free driver's education course for for all students. Like anything, there's trade-offs. That would take FTE from the high school. We'd have to buy, I think, probably a couple more simulators. But if we went with that kind of midterm option, we would be able to provide families that wanted to do the paid version and get the license and get the insurance deduction base, would be able to take the course, and then we'd have this free course for anyone else that would want to. So that would be an option that we could put in place. In the midterm, it would take some scheduling, kind of rearranging with with Mr. Huppin. So we would be able to do it right off the bat in the fall, but kind of, but within the year, we'd be able to at least get that, get that rolling. And that would, at least for any family that wanted a free option, we could provide that. So that would be, that would be an option. And then long-term, and I looked at, it would be about, if we wanted to just take this program over from the ESD, use our staff, get them certified, allocate that FTE, it'd be around between two fifty and three hundred thousand dollars, and some, you know, and some staff members. So long-term, if that's the direction we want to go, that would be the route we would take, is just separating completely from the ESD, training our people, and just kind of run it as a whole.
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
With High Desert ESD, and I don't have the sheet in front of me, we put them a lot of money, like, I think eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year for certified subs, and we pay them a lease payment.
Yeah.
Are we able to menu pick, like, if there's certain things with High Desert ESD that we don't use, could we apply it to the driver's education?
Joel, that would be an interesting thing to look at.
See what we definitely need from them and what we don't.
Yeah. So that exact process, I want to say, Tammy, it's probably in April or May, we sit down with the ESD, and they present, hey, here's the local service plan. The superintendent from there comes, talks to the board, we did that, I want to say in April or May. So we will, again, in April, go through that exact same process and say, what does the the ESD offer? What is it the district wants to buy? So that will happen. I don't know about the like, hey, we got a little bonus money over here, can we shift that over there? But that's definitely something I'd be willing to to ask about, because I'm looking under rocks for the drivers ed money right now. So so that's definitely something, I think, an opportunity worth exploring.
So how is this contracted? Is it in our contract that we get one teacher from High Desert ESD, or we get the program?
They, they don't, I'd have to go back and look at the specifics. It's called the LSP, the Local Service Plan. I think it probably just has something of, they offer the program, and we, you know, take advantage of it. But we don't, don't believe, and I want to look at the contract, that we're paying anything for this, because it's, it's a self-funded program where they're paying their people, and we have the number of students. Go buy it. Yeah.
And then when is the summer program planned? Who runs that?
Uh, the ESD runs that in the summer, and we advertise, I think, yeah. I don't know the exact numbers, I can, I can get that. But yeah, they run it in the summer here.
How many kids a year do we both leave it?
So the average class size around, so the max they can fit is twenty-four. On average, it's around fourteen to seventeen, they said, over the last few trimesters. I think it was, I would say it was forty-four total last school year is the number that that comes to mind. But yeah, right around fourteen to seventeen.
And Joel, just to be clear, on the free option, there's no, you don't get a license with that?
That's, yeah, that's the trade-off, where if we just wanted to say, hey, we want to offer drivers ed to everyone.
Yep.
Um, it would just be, you know, kids would still be getting the knowledge. We just, and we could, we could maybe work towards that, but there's some pretty stringent requirements on what the kids are supposed to do. So we were trying to find ways of, hey, if if our outcome is we want to just create safer drivers in Kirk County, which I think we all would nod our head yes, we would, we would provide that free option, so that kids would be getting, students would be getting that, that content knowledge and that, that practice. So that that's one way we could do it. We're just trying to kind of think outside the box where.
Have you talked to the companies currently? You, I mean, it's like six months to get your kid a drive test on their birthday. You're lucky if they can get in on their birthday. But you go through, you go through third parties, and there's like seven or eight of them in the state. Has anyone talked to them at what they could offer to schools? Through a program like this?
No, that I, I'm not even aware of these companies. So that would be, that would be very touching on their.
Yeah, the ESD has talked to them.
Yeah.
And they're just so cool.
That's why they're booked out six months.
No, they're not. You can get into them in like a couple of weeks. The TMB is booked out. Well, you're lucky to get one.
That's definitely something worth exploring, working at companies that could potentially do this. So yeah, so those, those are our options, and that's where we're sitting. We're at least able to find some scholarship money. The the teachers actually said that that really boosts their cap, where some kids were like, okay, now I, now I can do this. But this, I think everyone at this table would agree that eight hundred dollars is way too much for families. And we need to find, continue to work to to get a reasonable solution that kids can, kids can rely on.
How is this class advertised by two high scores? And we never got any documentation about it. How did kids find out about it?
I know they put flyers out. I believe it's in the curriculum guide. But that's, I think, another improvement there of getting that information out.
So if eight hundred dollars is such a barrier, that we have less than half the max slots filled every year, then why is our four thousand dollar number supposed to be the Band-Aid for that?
I think that's just per trimester. So in talking to, yeah, the, the teachers said that once they were able to offer this scholarship, they were able to cutting the price in half, essentially, if you're doing ten, four hundred scholarships, that that was the ticket that that helped fill those spots, at least in the spring semesters or trimesters. So yeah, so they said that was a big thing. And at the end, they said they had kids saying, hey, if you get this grant again, let us know, because, you know, there's other people that want to take advantage of it. So, so it did, it did make a difference, at least according to the teachers.
It was three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we could never get in. I mean, we tried multiple times to get in.
I mean, that, that ninety-six represents what, about forty percent of the sophomore class?
Right around half generally of a class. So that's why this free option in in the kind of midterm range makes a lot of sense, where any family that wanted to could take advantage of it. So that, that, I think that would probably be a reasonable goal for us to get after this year, is to to work with the high school staff, figure out how to at least provide this, provide this free option, so that anyone that that does need, wants to take advantage of it can.
You said get more simulators was that what you thought?
That, I think it was just on the computer. I can get an exact figure and get back to you on that.
That was my question, is how many simulators do we have?
We have, we currently have two, they said. So I think we'd want to at least double or triple that. So we can, we can look at what the individual dollar figure is for each of those.
And then the additional funding for a short-term fix, coming from where?
That's a I think we're gonna try out a forward project, which is where we kind of pull some of our club funds from. I kind of talked with the person who oversees that grant, but this is probably would work for that. So that at least buys us some time to I think there's some other pockets. There's another grant that is for well-rounded educational experiences that I think we might be able to look at. And the tricky thing is, is finding the money. So
The money goes, so if the family pays seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, does that go to High Desert ESD? Does that go to Kirk County School District?
It's a self-funded program through the ESD. So the ESD takes that money and uses that to pay the teachers for running the class.
So the additional funding for scholarships, we would then pay to High Desert ESD, put more people in our classes?
Uh, it would just credit, it would credit the kid's account. Yeah. So instead of costing seven ninety-five, it would, you know, the money all ends up. So we'd work with, and on what the, the procedure affects.
I understand why we have to go raving the grant funds to pay for this. We're going to be asked later tonight to pay four hundred and forty thousand dollars to acquire rundown modulators. Why can't we pay for drivers ed for kids?
Yeah, that's something we can definitely look at, general fund dollars. You know, it's all trade-offs, right? It's you can use it for this, we can use it for that. So
Whenever it's coming.
Yeah, no, I didn't. That's why.
Yeah. We need two hundred and twenty sophomores taking drivers ed. If they don't take drivers ed, and they don't get any instruction at all, then they just drive without licenses, which we already know about. Or they drive badly without licenses, even more terrifying for all of us. Yeah. So, you know, I, this is something that's long been a part of high school education, ever since the car culture came along in the sixties. I don't know where, how we got off track. If the High Desert ESD can't get the job done, then let's reconfigure what, where their attention is. We've got plenty of local service plan dollars that could possibly be reprogrammed to take care of this with the ESD, if we don't want to do it ourselves. And if they can't do it, we'll do it. I don't know. I don't understand what we're doing. We're not ambitious enough, Joel.
I think we need to advertise it better to the sophomore class, because I must have looked over that in the curriculum guide. But also, when I went three or four times to get schedules fixed, taking care of, never was drivers ed offered.
Interesting.
And I had a freshman and a sophomore last year, and they share all the freshmen, sophomore, and a junior, and I haven't heard anything about drivers ed.
We can look at how it's currently being marketed and go from there. One constraint that the teachers, the drivers ed teachers did say, they said, even if it was a hundred percent free, they don't have the capacity or the teachers to take on that role. And they said, other other adults are not going to get trained on this because of the, the time it takes to get trained and the low pay. So that would be another consideration as we, if we want to throw general fund dollars at this, that would be something we'd have to look at. But we're, we're, we can definitely start exploring. So we have options.
Drivers, and I think our PE teacher did for extra duty. Like, I don't like, sorry.
Mine was called Mom and Dad. Tell them my name.
Um, so we can, we can go back and
I think we'll have some families that, you know, utilize Carrie, and there'll be some families that do need some form of a class, you know. So there may be a little bit of a give and take, maybe not two hundred and twenty needed, you know, type situation. Yeah, but where is the cost continue to drive up if they don't pay their teachers much, and they can't get enough to fill the positions, then where is the ad, where's the action? They're not bumping up raises to pay people to teach the class.
Yeah.
If it's more than doubled from Jen's kids, where, I mean, where's the uptick in that? Where's that, where's the cost of the car?
You know, I know we just got a new car, but yes, we say, the ESD just got a new car. So
But that was an ODOT grant fund.
It could have been. So, so I'm not sure, but that would be something to, they, they fund the program and model it. I can, I can get a breakdown from them on where their, their costs are going. So maybe I'll, I'll put a report back to the board in the next month or two on the, the update on how we're going on this.
Any other questions?
Good evening, everybody. I am here about, just a follow-up from the summer school. Julie, you putting up that, or is Eric? He's putting up my presentation. So fun, the anticipation is great. It'd be so exciting. Yes. I can start off by talking about summer school. So our district ran summer school at both, or at K through five for sixth grade or incoming sixth graders, and then incoming ninth graders, as well as credit recovery at the high school. Currently, what's happening is Jump Start. So our incoming kinders, oh my gosh, so tiny and so cute, are currently attending Jump Start both last week and this week to get their, you know, start into school, learn how to do all the, all the school things. So it's so much fun. So summer school up there, you see a bunch of pictures of people working with kids doing like literacy circles. Kelly Beebe has a big slide up for the incoming ninth graders. It says, how do I calculate my GPA? And, you know, how do I stay on track? So ninth grade transition was a big focus on that big change from middle school to high school is like, hey, now, like, we have this thing called a GPA, and we have a thing called, you know, passing all your classes in order to have this GPA and and graduate. And so that was a big focus of them. And then at the bottom right-hand corner, you have Mrs. Frizzle. So first and second graders did this cute little storyline with, and Mrs. Frizzle came, and she did butterflies and insects, as well as, you know, the reading around it, and just some experiential. So Eric, next slide, please. So kindergarten Jump Start, what I can tell you about kindergarten Jump Start is that I have heard from the three people who are in charge of Jump Start at each elementary school, that they are saying that this is the well, one of, some of the largest numbers that they've had, and this move is running kindergarten Jump Start that they have had. And so they are excited about families, their kids are excited. I even heard the other day, like, oh, my gosh, they almost all know how to hold pencils. So to get kindergartners in who have that skill is a big win. So they are real excited. So I am excited to kind of give a report for you guys on that after a while. But elementary summer blast, three hundred and seventy-seven students were enrolled in grades one through five. So that's incoming first graders to incoming fifth graders. It lasted four weeks through the month of July, four-day weeks. Their focus this year was storyline and literacy. So if you have questions about what storyline is, I can kind of talk about that later, but it's really theme-oriented. And jumps, or sorry, summer blast always has And um jumps or sorry, Summer Blast always has some great indoor activities as well as outdoor activities, and they try to incorporate a lot of science. Um, into their literacy, throwing some math when it's good, um, and they get outside and lots of experiments. So. Um, sixth grade transition, this was an interesting um year because we really got some survey data. One of our things going into sixth grade transition was giving sixth graders. Um, a preview, obviously, of sixth grade and the people that they would see and the classmates that they would have, but also we wanted. Uh, to kind of reach them and make sure that they left that sixth grade transition knowing. Who they could go to for support or where they could go to for support and whether this transition. Um, this three-day process helped them feel more prepared going into their sixth grade year. And so sixth grade transition, there were a hundred and twenty-five students that filled out the survey. Although we had about thirty more students than that that were registered for it. So if you kind of take it all the way, maybe on that third day when they gave out the survey or the third day in the afternoon when they gave out the ser- survey. Um, some of the students might not have been there. Um, so it's three full days. And again, a focus on relationships and resources. And so one of the scales was on a scale of one to five, how prepared do you feel coming into sixth grade? Some were neutral, but most were either somewhat prepared or very prepared. They felt like their their experience over those three days helped them get there. And then how would you rate the availability of support for academic and personal challenges? And most of our kids rated it as excellent or good. Um, a few in the fair category, but no poor. So they felt like the people that they were introduced to and the programs and resources that they were introduced to. Were gonna help them come in a couple of weeks when they started school, um, as well as they got a good handle on where they could go to for support. And then ninth grade transition was the big focus for our high school. Um, they had sixty students that took the survey. Um, but. On one of the days, Kelly Beebe said, I think that they had eighty-five students. So it was, um. Longer than the sixth grade transition by a couple of days, but she said they had more like. I showed up on today, I didn't show up tomorrow, I showed up on the next day. You know, as they get to ninth grade, they get a little bit more independent in their abilities or their desire to show up on some days and not on others. But sixty of them took. Um, the surveys. And their survey data, I don't know if I put that on the other slide or if I was still looking at that data. No. So I'm back. I can give you the data, but it was similar to sixth graders and that they felt. Like they knew where to go to and the people to contact if they had personal or academic challenges, as well as many of the ninth graders. Learned a lot about clubs, activities and sports. That was, those were the areas that they felt like in ninth grade transition that they learned a lot about as well. Just good, because those are the things that connect them to school. Um, but we know, right? The more kids we have involved in sports and the more kids we have involved in clubs, the the healthier they are. Um, and the more connected they are. Um, ninth grade transition was a lot about this practical advice. How is high school different than middle school? And oh yeah, sixty-five percent of students said they felt very prepared, um, or prepared to go into high school. Um, so that's pretty good. And again, another slide of one of the things that that Kelly um presented, which is, you know, what is a grade point average? And how do you calculate that? The other part at high school that happened was credit recovery. So at the time that I made this presentation about a week and a half ago, um, twenty-one students had. Signed up to take a credit recovery course. Out of those, um, twelve students had earned twenty credits. So still waiting to finish out the next couple. So some kids had really good intentions. And were a little slower on the role of of earning some of those credits that they had. Maybe not done so well in the previous years or to stay on track to graduation. Well, all good things to report on summer school despite the challenges of a much uh limited, more limited budget than we've had in the past. Um, in my follow-up meeting. Transportation went well, nutrition services went well, communicating to families. There's a few places where we could make sure that families knew what was happening. And how to get registered uh through synergy, but kids had a great time. Teachers expressed a good experience as well.
So the credit recovery carries for kids that previously failed in class or kids that are lacking in credits or both.
And Carrie, is this the first time you guys have done a sixth grade transition and a freshman, or has that always been?
So there's always been a piece of that with inside summer school. So last year, incoming sixth graders did have a track that they. Were in around sixth grade transition, but that was a mix-in with baking and field trips and all the other pieces. And the ninth grade transition has also been a piece that's happened the last couple of years. Okay, so yeah. Hey, thank you, guys.
All right, Eric's coming up for me, and we don't switch again. Uh, no, Eric, it's the Google slides. Well, Eric, on the up, uh, the board, uh, as we add more and more details, just organizational chart. Uh, I put it up on a big paper for you. And Eric, I can pull that up if you need to. Awesome. So the the saga of organizational charts, I believe we're about a year into this, where I think it was about this time last year, the board was asking, hey. Tell us about the district's organizational chart. And we've, we've looked at a couple of examples. That example on your left, I I think is from the New York Erie. Canal Railroad Company. It's a work of art. It's their organizational chart. I believe it's hanging in a museum. Um, on the right, you've got uh probably some company whiteboard uh organizational chart, and we are wanting to. Be more on the left than the right. Uh, next slide. So when you asked, uh, I believe it was back in July or August, uh, we had a very just. Big picture overview org chart and and then the board said, hey, we want a little more detail. Eric, next slide. Um, so I presented this in in April where we went to all the schools and took it down to that level. Uh, and then uh the board said, hey, we'd like a little more detail. Uh, let's see the the department position. So now you have what is sitting in front of you. Eric, next slide, uh, where you have all the positions, um, for the district. So. Before we get started, number one, uh, just the additions are we added all the department staff. Uh, number two, we've updated the director of communication title. We've added director of communication and human relation. Uh, Leland's, uh. From facility and safety to operations as he sees all oversees all three of those service department. Um, one thing to know on this, uh, the principals and assistant principals of each school, they divvy up the certified staff, the teachers that they observe. So that's not. Shown on this yet, who, how they're divvying those up. Um, district-wide shared positions are on that orange section in the middle. And those are also to see who is responsible for evaluating those people. They're also listed under a department for or a school of the the principal or director who's. Um, evaluating them. And number five. This is staffing is fluid. It is very, uh, uh, there's a lot of information on this that. You know, even talking to J today, we had some some staffing changes, but um we are continuing to at least work for this, updated. Um, every time I look at it, I catch some little tweak to make as it represents, I think I had. Six hundred and forty-seven lines in an Excel sheet that I tried to make uh make sense uh in here. So, um. If you look under each school, it says the school and then the number of students. Uh, so that number of students is as of last week. Uh, and then again, staffing is fairly fluid. I'm sure there is um. Some titles are 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 tricky on this. One other thing to understand why this just isn't as black as white as we'd want it to be, uh. For example, I was working on like a pioneer. So Pioneer has a a sped teacher who does three or so classes there. And then um and then some County High School kids go over for for those class. And then that teacher also. Is also positioned at the high school and some pioneer kids. So there there's, it's never as clean as we want it to be, but we're at least kind of ticking away at. At this, so. Or chart round four.
But is this correct that? You're supervising the C C N S and C C H S. And your principals.
Secondary schools.
And then you're picking the ones on the left.
Each year historically, it's. Uh, it's funny because I was thinking that question. The only thing that has been typical about um evaluation is that it changes every year. Um, previously, I think Dr. Yekka. And Dr. Yekka just maybe did it. Everyone, uh, Jay has done G M H with his online experience before. So typically, um, the leadership team sits down before the start of the school year and says. What makes the most sense and where should we focus our efforts? Um, on your question about secondary versus elementary, um, on the evaluation piece. We would be working side by side on that, um, as well as well as kind of tackling any issues.
Do I see that the? The arts and the drama and the music is still at zero. It's, there's still not any shared positions you have.
Yep.
Barnesview Elementary has. Zero art.
Yeah.
But then Crooked River doesn't have any art or any music.
One thing, um, a note on here. So art, uh, particularly music. So Philip White has a full-time music position. And that was uh how the schools were set up probably two or three years ago, where each school specialized in that. One note on this, that steam position, uh. That is actually a a Steen's pillar position, that bottom row and the Lego uh tech Lego robotics is at um Steen's pillar. So and one thing we're looking at, because I know that's been a priority, is uh Kimberly in trying to get ahead of this, is seeing whether we can find some um funds to host. At Crooked River, a uh music, one of our old music teachers coming back to do uh like a. Yeah, it's like a three-week uh unit where they cover all the music standards. Um, we're meeting with all the elementary music teachers on, I want to say, August. Twenty-sixth of? What was that? All one of them? All of the ones that fill those musicals, because it's Steen's pillar. Um, Janelle Deedon, she is the art teacher. But she also uh teaches music. She's got a really strong music background, so she incorporates that. So. Um, like we've talked about before, we, we are finding ways to make sure that every student is getting all the music standards. Um, and we're just having to be creative like that. Uh, so that's, that's one thing we're continuing to work on.
So at the middle school, there's, there's not any drama teacher. Is that a club? Because they're they're trying to promote the high school drama.
Yep, so that, I know in the past that has been a club. I don't know. Yeah, uh, I know the music teacher, sorry, the band teacher and choir teacher are shared, so they split their time. Um, that doesn't happen with our drama teacher, but I know the drama club has been the largest club of the middle school, um, in the past.
So for Pioneer. Um, you have a full-time counselor. You have a full-time principal and an assistant principal?
Nope, uh, good question. So the the Pioneer, it's A P you'll see on top. So, um, Michelle Jones, she's the assistant principal. She is under Jake, so there's just, she's the assistant principal.
And how many? How many kids are enrolled at Pioneer? And of those, how many kids? Of those kids that are enrolled at Pioneer, how many get uh moved over to Grizzly Mountain?
And they split their time between Pioneer and somewhere else.
So are the Gris, is Grizzly Mountain receiving some of the Pioneer kids that?
I'd have to look in if there's any situations like that. I know that heading into this year, because that number is lower. Um, and we know that students at our alternate schools have higher mental health needs typically, so that's why we staff that at a higher ratio. But we're adding Patty Schmitz. If you remember, she was um halftime at at Grizzly, uh, Steen's pillar and kind of shared some time. We've, uh, the board in the budget, uh, made that a full-time position. And then I'm also working with Ann Casperger. Um, who is the counselor at Pioneer to support, um. Grizzly Mountain Home Link High School students, because there's some scheduling pieces that are really important to make sure those. So. There will be some carryover of that council position from Pioneer to Grizzly Mountain Home Link. So that that will be shared and that kind of makes up for those. Um, lower numbers over there.
Did you figure out, um, when I was asking, and I think Scott had asked too, what? If it's a. Not a requirement or a suggestion, did we figure that out on the ratio of counselor to student?
Did figure that out.
Well, yes, yeah. It was, yeah, suggestion is what? And what is?
It's a recommendation.
What is the recommendation?
One to two fifty is their recommendation.
But they have to be licensed to be able to write reports.
Yeah, uh, and that was, I think, some confusion that we heard where there was issue of like, uh, counselors, um, with liability of. And anytime a student makes a threat of self-harm. That's where um some liability issues where a counselor, uh, in talking with our counselors, they always want to make sure they run their decision. Uh, by a second counselor to to cover that. So that's why.
It's not day-to-day.
Yeah, yeah, just on those those self-harm uh issues.
Okay, so just to clarify, there's no state recommendation. There's nothing for them to keep their counselor licensing through the state. It's just a recommendation by who that they can be. Because like, I just think of like doctors' offices or, you know, they have limitations of patients they can take. So school counselors are different.
Yes, the, it's, it is just a recommendation from, I'm not sure which association, the American Counseling Association is recommend recommends a ratio of one to two fifty. The whole, um, the, I believe, but the liability issue that I think the board had heard was around. Um, self-harm reports or suicide reports, at least that's as we dug into it, that's what the counselor said they were um concerned about. And particularly around the middle school, uh, only having one there, one to six hundred, and then saying like, hey, if I've got to do a self-harm report. Um, they're kind of felt like they were on an island. So getting two counselors there was really important.
Do Barnesview and Crooked River have? Somebody else because they're at.
Yeah.
Barnesview's at five hundred and thirteen with one counselor.
Yeah.
So really, that school should. Be at two under recommendations. But who do they consult with?
Yeah, so they usually would use each other, whereas they have a, a, you know, a a student. Uh, self-harm threat, then they would, they would partner up and and be the the check on what's going on.
What's the total number of employees?
At this very minute? But here's where it gets tricky is, um, when you start talking about. Coaches, part-time coaches, full-time coaches, volunteer coaches, um. The total of all these numbers, I'd have to.
We've got a total.
Yeah.
H R.
Yeah, all, uh, I can do an update. We've had all our directors look over this.
If it's four forty, I mean, the reason I ask, because I counted up the number of administrators, which is twenty-four, if I counted them right. So that's about one administrator for every eighteen employees, which is actually an impressive number. Based on the four forty.
Okay.
If it's much less than that, I'd like to know that. I think one to eighteen is a good ratio for supervision. The high ratio, actually.
Yeah. And that, when you say minister, you mean managers, all of the adults.
Everybody could get a white.
Everybody in a white box. Okay.
For your, um, counselors at Barnesview, if there's five hundred and thirteen students, is. That your, um, English language learning school, that's like the main hub for the. English language learning school is Barnesview and?
There's definitely a higher rate of English language learners at Barnesview.
And do you have a bilingual counselor there?
I, I would have to, I would have to, I don't, I don't believe so, but that's something, and I'm, that's something we'd have to kind of circle back to you on. We do have, and and if the person is not bilingual, um, our welcome center is posted there, where we do have people that are are bilingual. So if there was an issue where we need someone to pull in. That's how we make sure those students were getting getting served in in their native language.
Are the teachers that are running the bilingual program, are they bilingual?
I, so bilingual programs, so we have, uh, what's called the Enhanced Language Cohort.
You should, I mean, I'm just asking.
There used to be a dual. So the dual language program, when I want to say about four year, four or five years ago.
I can't be, I lived here then and it was.
You know, it was going, because when my daughter attended kindergarten there, the teacher that was teaching was not.
So there's, um, I can get a timeline. So there's various different ways. So there's, um. And we talked a lot about it. So there's English language learners, which are our students who are are in the process of learning English. Um, and then we had a dual language program, which was a bilingual program where fifty percent English, fifty percent Spanish.
We don't have that anymore.
Uh, I would say, I could go like, look, I I believe it's been, it's been a while, probably five years or so.
Going four or five years.
Yeah, four or five years ago, um, we weren't able to hire enough staff or keep up with, uh, that. That were speaking English and Spanish. So it shifted to, um. A, uh, what they call, uh, Enhanced Language Cohort.
Language enhancement.
Language, language enhancement, or where they use something called SIAI protocols, um filter instruction, observation protocols. Where um they are grouping those students together and giving them additional language support. Uh through instructional assistance, there's a whole program, um it would be one where. I wouldn't want to, I wanted to do it justice, so I wouldn't want to just kind of shoot off the cuff and try to explain the whole program, um that's something we could bring back to the board in the next. Month or so.
Okay, so the ELD teachers at elementary, that's the title there, then we go to. ESL teachers at secondary, so is that a difference in programs?
Yeah, it's. And it's just terminology, and it big picture, those are all teachers that are, their job is to help our students who don't speak English um. Get those English skills, we just adopted a new curriculum, I want to say. Uh two months ago, um so whether it's, yes. Welcome to the education field.
English is the second language, it does flip for secondary students.
English language development.
They're, they're developing, yes, we're doing more of an immersion, they're developing an English language, whereas when you're in secondary. It's more of a support, English is always be. Your second language, but we're providing those supports in the English environment.
Just want to point out that if anybody is really interested, ELL, there is a thirty-six page report in here consented.
That's one acronym on here, Scott, that's why I'm trying to decide what we're looking at.
It's what you would call the actual student.
So do these all fall under the ELL? But we just decided to decide that. That's actually why I was asking, because of the report that was in here, that's not even on here.
Read that whole report.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know if my my org chart is ready for the museum yet, but it it does, uh it exists, it's here, we'll we'll keep it updated. And perhaps be an annual things uh to the board if you're interested. I can't make the writing any smaller for you guys, so.
So on Barnesview, we have the reading intervention that's shared, same with Crooked River, but then it seems pillar, we have a literature.
Yeah.
Not a reading intervention, so what's the difference in those programs, why do we stop it at one elementary and not the other two?
That's what we're.
Really good question.
What we're designing, so that'll be coming soon. So that'll be restructured in.
So we're gonna put. Either this is all going to be the same at all the elementaries or?
Yes, they'll, they will, everyone will have something. So we're going, we're going to tier. Include some different supports for different students that need different supports, different programming, different materials. But yes, every one, every campus will have a support.
And is, are these support people also going to go over to Grizzly Mountain? Because we don't have a lot of shared positions at Grizzly, there are a lot of these.
Yeah.
Younger kids, so is that? Are we going to support the kids that also go to Grizzly Mountain in these categories that are currently only at the in-person?
Yeah, I I think you can expect a complete redesign and organization, I mean, I think that's Dr. Skinner's.
I would like to see the reading.
So the answer to that will be, we have to let the C and in-person students will be covered. Because to get specialized, you know, services and reading instruction, we'll have to see how many kids and what things are going to be there, so they'll determine. How much um it's a half a day, okay, it'll be there four days, so. Um once we get those members in terms of the hybrid part, students that are in person, then we'll be able to figure out the ratio of support. It wouldn't be a full person that's really there for half a day, like some.
I'm assuming that's what we're doing with reading intervention is better shared at these two, that then we have a full-time.
Hey, meetings are all taking place this week, so we'll have that. Inside and restructuring very soon.
Ms. Brolly did have that same question, where I was like, wait, why is it called a reading specialist here and then a literacy coordinator here? So I think, yeah, just some clarification, clean that up, um I'm excited to see what what comes out on the other side.
So there's a zero on there, that means there we have a job open for that, or?
No, good question, um so the board was very interested in in horizontal alignment, and we've made some gains, and I and I think. Uh we still have some areas like. Yeah, we're in this, we're in this really. We're in this real interesting business where where for um. For, I'd say for three or four years, it was encouraged. And uh we were intentionally saying, hey, each elementary school has a different specialty, right, uh Steen's pillar especially is. Um robotics, technology and art, and um Barnesbut's specialty was uh. Language and culture, because they had a higher ELD population, music, uh and uh they had one other specials, and then Crooked River had their specials. So that's how we designed the system in intentionally. And then I think since in the last year, it's like, no, 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 we want everything to be equal, so it it takes time to get that horizontal alignment. So we're finding, we're trying to find creative ways.
I can hear him over here.
I can hear him sighing. Try and Scott.
No, no, I I think that's the fair explanation, but I think it's lacking context, you know, we did that. Because we had plenty of room in all the elementaries and parents could pick and choose where they want other kids to go based on the type of program, it wasn't the hardest for your kids to rent. As the district's population has grown and the buildings are hitting capacity, the ability to move your kid to the school of your choice is not as. Available as it used to be, so now we have to move back to where we have a more consistent program, because you may end up in your residential school.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
It's just a different world operating.
I definitely am getting the message from the board to. So so I think, you know, involves people and their jobs and and figuring that out, so we're we're trying to, trying to kind of shift that, shift that. That ship so that we're we're getting that equal thing now that that's the board's priority. I hear you. We'll get there.
Hey, we're going to hand it off really quick, Mike. The three-point-force Senate Bill three report for Mr. Jake Hapman.
Hey.
Your turn.
Yeah. Um in your, in your packet. Hopefully, hopefully you got the spiciest idea, but uh in your packet is the the ODE kind of summary of the of the Senate Bill three, so that's kind of the big picture view. It has timelines, it has um, you know, for im- implementation, it also has some frequently asked questions, and then I got together with uh Mrs. Lombach. And Mrs. Van Rokel and our department head Heather Wiles, and we kind of. Took a picture of where we currently are and where we're headed, and then we'll hopefully answer questions for you, so just the summary of the bill is just um, you know, with this. We now have to offer a um a personal finance credit and a careers credit. And the personal finance credit at one time was a social studies credit, and that is no longer the case, so it's a separate credit now. It doesn't change the number of credits that you have to earn, so it's still twenty-four credits. But seniors will have two more classes, a personal finance class and a careers class, so what we currently offer, when you look at it, um in tenth grade, students in social studies will. Take either World Cultures or like an AP Human Geography class.
I don't think we have what you're looking.
You don't, I, you you have. You have that, and then I'm just telling you what the school would do, I can send this to you if you'd like, but. So what we currently offer is World Cultures and AP Human Geography. Eleventh grade is um US History and AP US History, and then twelfth grade is when they would take their government or AP Government. So the way we would, we we think about going forward is tenth grade still is AP Human Geography and World Cultures, eleventh grade US History. And AP US History, and then in twelfth grade, because we are going to need to replace that social studies credit, there'll be a government A and B. And then there'll also be um personal finance and careers their senior year. And that is the way that um. Social Studies Department decided that they think that would be the best way to go, because it offers a little bit more flexibility for freshmen in their schedule. Do some intervention classes, and then it also kind of makes the senior year a little bit more rigorous, which might lend itself to a little bit less early graduation. Questions?
I have thoughts. Several.
Please share.
But first, I need to disclose that I am a member of the State Treasurer's Financial Education Advisory Team, and we pushed Senate Bill three. So I've had a lot of conversation around this. The drive for that is coming from the pretty universal. Criticism of school districts that we're getting, and certainly here in this community, I've heard it from parents, from students. From employers that kids don't know the basics of the financial system when they graduate. I've looked at our curriculum, I've looked at it with you, I've looked at it with other staff. We're teaching it, it's in there in the curriculum, but they're not learning, because they're not carrying it with them once they leave, so I mean, you can show it on the blackboard, but that doesn't mean you know.
Right.
So I hope that when we start putting this into place, and we're still waiting on the Department of Education guidelines.
Yeah.
Which will probably take whatever the State Treasurer's Group did that was brilliant and destroy it with Department of Education speak. But I hope that we can go above and beyond wherever that gets, and we can focus on the real problem of how are we going to know? That our kids know what they're supposed to know about how to function in the financial world once they graduate, the practical skill that they're missing now. I I'm distressed by this focus on finance and then the whole. College career pathways, blah, 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 that, you know, we've been through this a million times. I hope we can really lean into that financial education side, because that's what's missing, and I'm tired of being criticized for it.
Do the very best we can. What's that?
What would this class look like?
The standards aren't released, the ODE is still coming up with what the standards look like, but I have current, what the current personal finance standards are.
That's, are we just going to keep that class and then it becomes a requirement if it meets the standards that?
Yeah, personal finance is now going to be required, it's it's re- it's used as a social studies credit right now for seniors. And now they're going to have to take an additional social studies class, and then the personal finance, we. We've talked about moving that over to the math department possibly too, so. But it will be a required class, yeah, and their standards align with it.
When is World Cultures taken? What does that credit count for?
It's a social studies credit, it's taken tenth grade.
Realistically, you could get the social study that's like done before your senior year. With what they're counting currently off.
Also. They take, they take. AB, their sophomore year of. AP hug or World Cultures.
Right.
AB of US History, their eleventh grade year, and then their twelfth grade year, they'd have to take an AB of government. They currently, we don't currently don't do a freshman social studies class. There, I mean, it's possible, they could, they could take.
I just. That's the kids already taking rigorous courses.
Right.
Just seems like you're going to compile on kids that are already there.
That you can do it, you just have to be motivated to graduate early if you want to.
So you can take it as a junior?
That's what I'm trying.
Yeah, I think we talked about it, they they gave me the scenario, I can't re- I can't recall it off the top of my head.
Perfect world, that class would be not only being a regular classroom, but have an online option. For kids that want to compete early so that they can do that. You know.
The which one?
The the new financial education, senior financial career education, why why not make that online?
We haven't talked about that, I mean, we we probably could.
As part of your planning.
Yeah.
Think about that, because those early graduates could do that.
Yeah. Yeah, because we do have motivated early graduates, too, it's not just people that want to, yeah, so.
So I guess I'm misunderstanding, so it's going to be one class, so it's not two classes, it's finance and career.
No, personal finance is a half a credit, and then careers is a half a credit, so those are two separate classes.
I guess we'd have to wait for the standards to happen.
Yeah.
For me, it's like, that was home net. Like you learned how to to fill out the ten forty easy form, you learn.
Yeah.
You know, it's like the basics of life, you got in that class.
We had a, we had a pretty, a pretty notorious careers class a few years back, and I know you can remember with Vicki Duncan and. The, the highly touted portfolio, and no one's getting out of here without this portfolio getting done, and it was. Pretty contentious at times, but I mean, we've we've had a careers class, that's something that we've always had. We've always had personal finance, but the new part is, personal finance is now separate from social studies, because we've always been able to credit students' social studies credit for personal finance. And that's the main big change, and then re-adding the careers, I think is actually important, because I think it's more relevant to do it in their.
Is there a way to maybe incorporate, uh I guess, more basic? Class like a home net where you kind of get a.
Yeah, on this ODE, I mean.
Skills you can use in life, whether you go to college, do a career, you know, don't do anything after high school, but you can fix your button and bake yourself. Some food.
Don't we have that in the strategic plan?
That.
Isn't there something about life skills in there?
There's.
There was.
There was, I don't know if that. I just haven't heard that being looked at, so I wasn't sure.
Well, I mean.
Just like, not necessarily just this Senate bill, I'm just saying like, in general, just a life skills class, but.
Yeah, we have.
An elective, you know, but.
We're reviewing that um in two weeks at the August uh board retreat, so we can, if it's not on there, we can, we can look at what we have. And and rephrase it uh to have it aligned.
That's why I'm just.
More life skills.
Life skills on that, just. Yeah, and that's.
I can teach that class.
Put a stamp on an envelope.
There's, that that is really lacking in society today.
You get your first credit card.
When you bring this back, once we have the standards, could you bring some of that stuff with it, Jake, like what is offered in the finance?
Within the class, like what we're going to offer in the class?
Yeah, like, is that offered, like, how do you build credit, you know, how how do you apply for something, have you?
But, you know. Some of the stuff, some of the stuff on the, on the ODE is talking about credit scores, how to build credit, the costs and benefits of borrowing money on credit.
But do we offer that currently in our finances, what I'm asking?
I think, I think it's in, I think, yeah, I think in Mrs. Kropchak does, but I I can get that for you, but I'm saying in this Senate bill, that is what they're kind of pushing for.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's a reminder, though, that we're, according to their timeline, ODE, we're not implementing this until twenty-five, twenty-six.
Right, it's this year's. They're, yeah, they're a little behind, but this year's sophomores are the ones that are going to be impacted, they're going to have to have it as a senior, so. We feel like we're not going to, like, there's an, there's an opportunity, you could get a waiver, if you're not able to get it in place in time, I don't think we're going to need to do that.
I'm just saying, you're not going to have this next month for us.
No, no, I mean, if you want it, try to figure it out, I mean, probably not. But uh, yeah, Ms. Wiles was on the ball, she was thinking about this already and had a good plan, so.
So our kids that have taken the personal finance class currently with Miss Kropchak, can they get sort of a letter?
They're, they're, it it's not going to affect anybody until this, this year's sophomores are the ones, and none of them take personal finance yet, so. Those are the ones that are going to be impacted, so by next year, we should have this in place.
And then will we put it in place where they could potentially take it before their senior year?
Yeah, I think there's a way to do that, um, yeah, because I do think you're right, I think there are some highly motivated kids who want to get in the workforce.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we also have the kids that. Just want to get out of there, and we'd rather keep them a little bit longer.
There's some kids too that.
Yeah.
They already, they want that rigor, they already have, like, they're mapped out four years of high school and adding, you know, this class.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. I think I'm sitting here again, right?
Stay there, I'm on water number two, uh Wes and and Ryan, come on up for a CTE.
So similar to uh our. Org chart, uh when I presented the org chart in, back in April, uh the board also asked to bring back. Our CTE pathways to show K twelve. Um how we're preparing kids uh for, you know, the time they interest uh with us as kindergartens till the time they they graduate and move on. Um what is the sequence for our various CTE strands, so. As you know that I do, I put things in colorful charts, uh so what you have in front of you is, uh we can just go through each of these. Uh and before we get started, a couple of quick things to note, so you can add under the construction science. Um you'll see on the far right of each of our pathways, you'll see potential certifications and articulated classes. And then you'll see industry partners, um those are questions from the boards of what certifications we're giving, who are our industry partners, so. Um I think I've met with Ryan and and Jake, no, no, let me remember three times, uh pulling this all together and putting it in an organized organized way, so. Um under some quick uh just things to add, under the construction, uh industry partners, you can add Rick and Ba, Rick and Ba Construction to that. Um on on all the CCMS uh courses and all the various rows, you'll see Action Lab. What that is, that is a uh two-week units um that are based on different CTE strands, so two weeks of, you know, con-
Um, that are based on different C T E strands, so two weeks of, you know, construction, two weeks of graphic design, um, so that's where that Action Lab is. Uh, under manufacturing, um, that is a pathway that uh, we've consolidated, we've kept the classes, they're still on the books. Um, but that has been consolidated into, it looks like, um, I wanna say computer science as well as welding, part of our F F A. Uh, as well as one other note before we start the discussion, um, I listed all the courses that are are listed in the curriculum guide at the high school. Not every course is provided every trimester of every year, it's based on student demand, so that's, that's one thing to know. Um, along the right side of this, for example, on the screen, you see manufacturing, actually, Eric, could you scroll down to any other one besides manufacturing? Uh, go down uh, one more to ag, ag science, what you'll see on that far right column under potential certifications and articulated classes. What you'll see, like, for example, on that top uh, bullet item says L B C, so that's Linden Communal Community uh, Community College. Uh, Animal Science one twenty one, and then that's the college class that kids can get credit for, and the high school classes listed after that, so. They take C C H S Intro to Animal Science and Livestock Management to get that, so you can see for each one of these pathways, uh. Some certifications that we've identified and we're are reviewing, uh, as well as those dual credit classes that we're looking for. Uh, we can go through real quickly, um, and I'll turn this over to to Ryan and Jake to just talk, we can start at the top, and go through graphic design. And go through real, real quickly an overview, um, of kinda where we're at. So, um, at the elementary level, they're getting, uh, you know, various art classes, arts embedded in a lot of, you know. Kids ever bring home their drawings and whatnot, they're, they're learning those fundamental art skills. Uh, middle school, we've got photography, we've got six, three, eighth grade art, and then high school, a lot of graphic design, photography, um, some of the potential certifications we're looking at. Uh, Adobe Certified Professional as well as Canva Pro, and then it lists the the industry partners.
So Joel, when is the Action Lab offered at the middle school, and how many kids can take it?
I I think it's part of their elective wheel, so I'd have to get back the exact number of spots, but I believe. Probably darn near every kid takes that by the time they leave the middle school, but I can get with Marcus and figure out.
So they get a two week. Whatever intro, somewhere between sixth through eighth grade.
Yep, little, little Action Lab units on the various C T strands.
Yeah, I would like some.
Yeah, every two weeks, it's a different C T V strand, and I can get a, like a syllabi, kind of break down what those look like if you're interested.
They're in the class for the whole trimester, but.
Yeah.
They rotate.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure we.
Yep, understood that.
Sticking with one for three months.
Exactly.
Every two weeks you're picking up.
One semester, sixth grade has, one semester, seventh grade one.
So it's designed to, you know, as you get older, you're narrowing your focus, so it gives them a little taste of each.
I guess what I'm asking, does every sixth grader take Action Lab? Does every seventh grader take Action Lab? Does every eighth grader take Action Lab? Or do they take it as a sixth grader, seventh grader, or eighth grader?
Let me find that out.
It's a popular.
So I can answer that, um, inside of the system, they can take it more than once. But a lot of times they'll take it one time, sometime in their sixth grade year, sometimes seventh grade, they have that option, and so.
Ryan, how long has this graphic design C T pathways been offered, and how many certificates have come out of this?
So certificates wise, that is a really hard one for us. Um, and the reason is, is our instructor for that class also teaches our art classes, and so. At certain semesters, they're only getting one or two classes a semester in that, so, um. I will tell you, Adobe Certified Professional is an extremely hard certification, ninety percent of all graphic design teachers in the state of Oregon. They don't have that because it's super hard, and so we're trying to pull pieces out of that Adobe because that is. What is considered to be the top thing, and teaching them proof of skills inside of that, and so that we're preparing them for those certifications. Uh, but in graphic design, we really struggle, we, we do a lot of stuff through Canva, and that's where we're looking to get those certifications through Canva.
All right, now we've had to see your own.
Yes.
Verifications and Helen has the programmer.
Design? It's.
Before I was there.
Yeah.
We added art to it, and so that's.
But on the chart that you gave, most of the schools don't have art. So I'm, I'm thinking like. Yeah, it it's there, I don't see like the, there's a succession program going, so. The goal of the C T E yet, yeah, yeah, the goal of the C T E program is to provide us kids with certifications at the end of something. And we go through all of these, how many certifications do we have total that we've given to our kids, and how much money have we done into the program?
Right, so Joel, do you have that deal with all of the the data?
One other question that I noticed on the High Desert or the. High Desert E S D that we had on there, uh, in our budget that we spend with them, we have twenty two thousand dollars for a C T E. Liaison, I don't, I'm not sure, but like.
Our regional coordinator?
Yeah, what have they provided, if there's not any certificates being produced. Or paying twenty two thousand dollars a year, like, can I get some explanation on what that is, what they do, where that money's going, and what that is?
So, uh, the, and and I'm not exactly sure who the liaison is, we have a regional C T E coordinator. And they are responsible for helping us get all the federal funding that we do for our C T E classes. The stuff that we buy our machines, our equipment, all those things, that's what High Desert E S D does for us.
But you don't know who your person is that we're paying twenty two thousand dollars?
Yeah, Brooke Rich is her name, she's the C T E director for the entire region.
Is that the old Perkins?
Yes, yeah, Perkins Five, yeah, so they're the manager of that, they are the ones that hold uh, program and study meetings. Um, two, two to three times a year with all of the, everybody in the region, so that we, we are all pushing in the same direction. They're the ones that organize all those industry partners, that we get them all together, the industry partners talk. And say, you know, how, how should we progress? And and one of those conversations is, is. Um, you know, the funding for certificates, that's where we've been handcuffed for quite a while, and we put our emphasis on proof of skill. Developing, doing those skills, and that, and that's honestly, we're, we're excited about this conversation of having some funding. To be able to get those certificates, because that is a, it's not something that we haven't strived for, we just haven't been able to get there. And so our teachers have been really focusing on proof of skills, because some of those conversations with our industry partners is that. They, yeah, they love those certificates, but they want them to be able to do those skills. And so that's where we're, a lot of our focus has been, is is developing those skills inside of those classes.
I know that, uh, sorry, Doug Dalton from Baker Institute, he's been here for the last few years, I think, renting space in town and doing things.
Really good.
We've, we've, we've used B T I for, for classes, it's just really expensive, we've used it when we had a good high summer school budget, we. We actually had B T I classes in the summer to get C D Ls and all those things.
Yeah, so you guys, a couple of you know personally that we've had a really good relationship with B T I, in fact, they wrote. Uh, we've been on some grant writing together, so we, we get that, uh, when we had those extra fundings for sur- summer programs. Um, we put a bunch of our kids through heavy equipment operation certificates, um, three weeks courses. Um, as that money kinda dwindled federally to supply that, it it became very expensive, it's about, that three week course is about seven thousand dollars. Uh, for three weeks, um, so thirty five thousand, we tried to put five kids through that a summer, um, but it became a very daunting. Conversation when we didn't have that, those funds.
How many summers did we do that?
Two, I think. Three, was it three?
Yeah.
Three, yeah.
Don't have, we ever thought of bringing Doug Dalton into a board meeting, or already Ryan discussing with the board some of our potential. Partnerships and opportunities and certifications and.
Coincidentally, I spoke with Doug Dalton today, uh, and even being set up for next Wednesday to just say. Here's what we have done, what does the next uh, steps look like, and I talked about us wanting to be uh, kind of a forerunner in the region and the state of partnerships with. Getting kids certification, so.
So I'd like to hear from him and see what he has to say, what he can offer, and what. Kind of certifications and pricing, because as we go into like budget negotiations and things like that, I, and we set our, our budget, I would like to kinda. To kinda know, like, where we should be budgeting for things like that, because we should be pushing trades out of here, that is one of the. Big things that I love Dr. Skinner for, and I'm very grateful, is her knowledge of like wanting to push kids out with certifications.
Yeah.
I mean, can I share about the high schools, her high schools in Texas do not, they do not have a beauty school that are not, like, all of them have them, so if these kids don't wanna. Go into college, they're, they're all coming out with some sort of certification, I think one of the. Her goals, correct me if I'm wrong, is to make sure that a lot of our kids are coming out, but if they're, if they're not having a certification, they're coming out with an associate's degree.
Core completion.
Yeah, so, I mean, and that, that is a big thing, that we need to put that in our budget, or we need to look at things like, we need to make sure that we know that. Ahead of time prior to going into budget negotiation.
Absolutely, yeah.
What we need to provide.
We're headed there, talking with the community colleagues here, and just saying, you know, what's the next level, like. I think we talked about food handler, like, what's the next level of that, like, just one more notch up. To give somebody just one additional leg up, so it's like bakery, like, what else do we have to add? So, starting, you know. Small in some of those areas, and like, what's the one layer that we can add that's not that pricey? Um, and then, of course, some of the other ones, obviously.
I mean, like this college and. So teenagers in school, can they come out, I mean, can they work their senior year in a care home and, you know, get their C N A and.
Yeah.
I mean, are those, we own two businesses in town, and I have a husband who's actually certified to be an embalming instructor. And I did have a teacher from Grisling Mountain call and replaced a student, but I, I haven't heard. I haven't gotten calls for anyone, I have tons of kids who come and work through, but they haven't, like, I don't see the place, like, as a business owner, I. I haven't been reached out to at all, except for the kids themselves.
Yeah.
And it's mainly just word of mouth from teenagers, you know, and so I, I don't know what businesses we're reaching out to. To make sure, like, have, have you gone and met with the carriage place? And said, hey, we have these kids, they wanna go into nursing school, we know that they work here and part of this, you know, you guys pay for this on the job training. We'd like to get these kids in here their junior year and get them, so by the time they're a senior, and they have their C N A, and they can go right on. And and, you know, start applying to nursing school or do what they need to do with that, like, that's a big deal, that's a big leg.
Yeah, we had, uh, la- last year, we had four students that went to Regency and got C N As, got that process. This year, we didn't have any that wanted.
But, but do they know about it?
They want to advertise.
I didn't know about that.
I think, yeah, we're lacking that.
Yeah, so that's what we're going to work on, we're working on intentionality and really focusing and targeting every student, making sure once they come to us, a freshman year. Every student has a path and a track, and it's the absolute one that they want to do, so that when they are senior, we're not. Rushing around or trying to figure out what they're going to be when they're senior, and they're doing a good job, it's just really being intentional with every kid, making sure that. It's either core completion, associate certification, like, what is it exactly they wanna do, and then figuring out what can we do with either. Funding, grants, like, where, where can we go from there? We're gonna have a conversation about every single kid.
And is that part of, um, like your freshman orientation day, or do you hit them at eighth grade, like three fourths of the way through the year, when they go visit as eighth graders? To visit the high school, do they?
That's just to look at the classes that we offer, so the, the different programs of study. It's not necessarily for them to pick out a career path, it's just for them to kinda sample all the different classes.
And if we wanna look at them as freshmen, getting them on track, how are you, like, do you guys have anything that you're doing now?
Yeah, those are covered, and so we, we really try to expose them there on that, those C T E days that come, and then we also. Inside of our freshman success, success classes, that we're going in there and having those conversations and talking about all the different areas. What's their paths, what those look like, those are conversations we're having, and at least this last two years in freshman success.
And I think this program is just getting off the ground, I mean, a lot of this, I mean, I think it's, it's getting in place, it's getting all the things together. Um, you know, we've asked a ton of stuff from everybody, and I think this is, this is amazing, I mean, are we gonna build on it? Of course, we're gonna build on it. But I think you guys have done an amazing job just putting all of this together, because there were, I mean, you know. My youngest has decided to, I mean, he is now on this list, right? He's done the B T I, he's, he's now working for a construction company doing that.
Yeah.
Very thing that you just talked about, so, I mean, they're out there, and I think, you know, we're just getting started with it. And I think we're just gonna keep growing from there.
The biggest barrier, as, as we kinda dug into the numbers from the four goals, and like, it was, it's the finding the funding. And 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 it's, it's us as a district aligning our resources to meet our priorities, and I. I'm hearing loud and clear. One of those things up after the budget, you know, um, here in driver's ed music and uh, and the certifications.
Literally.
Yeah, yeah, so those are some.
C T program in Crete County, how long has this been a program?
Well, we add, we've added different programs, different years, I wanna say, so.
When did it start? Like, even if you had one program, when did C T start?
Yeah, I, I think, what you're saying is, the trades have been, it it's just been called.
Renamed.
I, I think Oregon was through a big kinda rebrand and revamp with C T E with Perkins dollars, um.
But when did that start branded under C T E in Crete County? When did we start it branded under Perkins dollars for C T E?
It, it's been since I've been in this school district, it, it was called different things.
Called vocational ed.
Vocational, vocational.
Just the whole, home, you know, we used to call.
So back to my original question too, how many certificates went out with all of those, exactly how many certificates, and if you have a funding problem. How, how do you pick the kids? So is it like the highest achieving kids?
Your kid has that interest in it first.
Yeah, pay for it, like, and personally, I mean, they're gonna come to you and go.
Yeah.
And what I need to for a welding certificate, and you're gonna go, great, Jimmy, here you go.
Yep.
How many certificates have on that? So, how many have we done?
Do you have that?
Well.
Cuz we do it every.
Last year.
Yeah.
There are four state degrees.
Yep, the F F A put out four, four state degrees.
But it's. So we had nobody that wanted to be a welder.
Yes, so. Yeah.
So out of, out of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. If only put fours certificates out of one of the.
This last year.
We're working on this.
And I think Shane, uh, to help with this, in the past, we've just reported certification at the end of the year, adding it to a trimester. Every trimester report, how many we've gotten, that way, we'll kinda catch it earlier, and and if we need more funding, we could add more funding. Um, so, so I think that'll be.
But is that how it works? Cuz I'm really finding that that's not always the case, it's like we approve a budget and and now we're sitting here, like Scott said, next meeting. You're asking for this to be approved, but we can't fund driver's ed, so. That's, I was hesitant on the first budget meeting to approve that whole budget, Dr. Skinner wasn't here, we didn't know her perspective, and it sounds like there's a real struggle, again, with funding, and so. I think the overall look, it's, you're, I know for me, when you ask me, you know, to. Spend a million dollars on modulators, or now we're gonna ask to be spending another half a million on modulators, it's like. And then here, I'm sitting here listening, our kids can't come out with certificates cuz we don't have funding, you know, our kids can't take driver's ed, so it's, it's, it's hard to. Understand, like, how do we help you help our kids? Because we're, I mean, four certificates last year, you cannot tell me there wasn't a kid that graduated last year that. Didn't wanna be a welder, that didn't wanna go be something else, so that's the focus I would like to see, and so. I don't know how to help you help our kids, because I feel like I don't understand how and where we get funding from, and I don't think. There's a big enough consensus on that here at the board level to figure out how we help you help our students, because it is. Sad to only see four certificates come out, and I, I can tell you, there are more kids that graduated last year that wanted to do something else that was not. Career driven to college, they wanted to, like I said, be a welder, or be an automotive tech, or be something that didn't require going. To C O C C or a four year state college.
And can I ask, like, when I set the budget, and this may be a duel, cuz schools are different, uh, from like regular budget things, but like. We set the budget prior to negotiating with teachers, like with the human and with the, and we set the budget and like. I didn't hear from Ryan, I didn't, I didn't know that there was a funding program for C T E. And then we only had four certificates, so how do we have better communication, communication in that regard of like.
Make sure there's.
I'm making sure that, like, before we set the budget, that we're knowing from our teachers, like, we, our kids are first. Our kids come first, like, we're in the business of education to make sure that they're successful adults in society. And this just, this seems like a circular game of like, we're putting all this money out, and we're not getting anything out of it. And so then the kids are, you know, taking all the classes, they're doing the things, and they don't have anything to show for it at the end, and so.
I do wanna add something, this isn't my area, but I do, I've been here for four years. And one thing I have, do wanna just add to this conversation, is that certificates, the idea of certificates has not been around as long as the idea of C T E.
Right.
The focus was not certificates, funding is not the problem. But the issue is that certificates is a newer focus, the focus was credits. And that has been amazing. And that has been amazing. And so adding this idea of certificates, it's awesome. And I think we need to go down that road. And they're working on it, but it's just, it wasn't the focus. That's not why the funding was there was, it wasn't there for certificates. I think it's just, I just wanted to play that out.
It was like what Ryan said, again, you've demonstrated the ability. Yes, I haven't, I don't need this paper to tell me that I know how to do that. So that was the focus before.
Very much so. That was our, our proof of skill. That, that was, you know, in talking about welding, we were, you guys. We were allowed to get another ag science teacher. And then that allowed us to offer more welding classes that now they can actually have begin an intermediate and advanced to get that welding certificate. So we're just one year in that process and next year we should have our first certifications in welding. Um, so it's steps like that, but our, our focus has been the proof, giving them the skills to go get those jobs versus getting a certificate, which. Uh, I'm all for getting certificates. I think it's great. It helps kids move forward. And that's ultimately, we want to give our kids success. And so, you know, them having that on their resume, those open a lot of doors.
How does the proof part of it work right now without certificates?
And so, um, each, e- e- each class has curriculum that is based on skill test. Show portfolio, we get to it advanced, then we start actually helping out, um, doing things in our community. And so, um, we're to that point, we've gained enough skill that we start stepping outside of the school and, and showing and, and doing those, yeah.
For example, at the CNA, like if you just have the child go up on their own and say, hey, Regency, I want to work. I'm gonna be a caregiver for you and I'm, I'm not going through the school, I'm doing this, like. And then they work up there and they just get a paycheck and they do whatever, but really the, the school could place them out through the CTE program or something and say, hey. We're gonna place you up here and you're not just working in vain for nothing, just for a paycheck. At the end of this two years, you're actually gonna. So then, then that certificate, you can't just take into a nursing program or down to COCC, like here's my portfolio. And, um, here's the hours I got in high school, but you can't take down the certificate. It says, hey, I got certified. By working all these hours through Regency and now I don't have to take all these other classes. I come in like. Two years ahead. The whole thing with just like, making a portfolio just doesn't cut it now in today's. World, like you can't just say, oh, I learned how to cut hair. Through my, you know, at school and high school and here's my portfolio and here's my, you have to have a certification. That you went through classes at Beggins or whatever and you can cut hair and now you can work at Supercuts or wherever. You can't just bring them a portfolio. So if that, like, we, we do have to, I'm in agreement with you, Anna, like, we, we have to shift our focus. That's not gonna help our kids. They're gonna have to go back to the beginning and they're gonna have to work all those hours over again to get their CNA. They're gonna have to do all that stuff again to actually get a certificate to cut hair. So they need to come out with that stuff so they can actually go work.
I think when you get the credits, you gain, you know, the ability to know if you like that skill set. Like I think that. To me, in my mind, that's the purpose of credits. Like, I took some welding and. I have a pretty steady hand, like, I'm not gonna do that, you know what I mean? But the kids that go all the way through. And they take advanced welding, well, we want them to be able to walk in, you know, or somewhere else, just like these kids that take the summer program. Like my kid was one of those that took the heavy equipment operator, Jen had one, but that was something that they could take to the employer, the. You know, Jubal saying like, hey, I did concrete all summer long with so and so, you know, and I ran these machines, like. They, that, that's starting in at ground zero. So you show them you can work these three machines again. So I would agree that I think the focus needs to change a little, but I guess I would ask. Joel, you said last year we produced four. The year before we produced like twenty-three more. So why did we get rid of CPR?
We did not get rid of it. That was a, uh, our instructor had a family emergency where he took off the last ten weeks of school. And so he was not able to be even in a building. And so we had to do some shuffling of staff members and. It's one of those things, he's the only one accredited to actually give that. And so when that happens, we.
Was it just not offered the first two trimesters of school?
It, it wasn't because of, he was not a full-time employee. He was a partial employee that we have stacked those classes so that when they get, they can get their third trimester of accreditation.
So do we have somebody filling that? Is he coming, he or she coming back? Are we gonna be able to offer that certificate again?
We have filled the position. We, it's a different person. And that's the intention.
So they're able to teach CPR on first date and give the certificate?
Not yet, no, they will be. Uh, I don't know about my first, first trimester. They have to go through the CTE licensing process and get.
It's not like you just go for the afternoon from H three and learn CPR.
No, I could have done that. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable teaching people how to do it. I could perform it, but yeah.
You've identified a lot of opportunities and areas and throw in. Options and possibilities for a lot of different things. And now you gotta, you just go through and start. Making the connections and filling the holes.
And I have some bonus information for the board. So if you flip your page over, you'll see an orange. There's more. And that is, so. We're really gonna push, you know, these pathways. We're reporting the board every trimester, you know, progress toward certifications, but then there's also. Kind of like to Anna's point earlier, we've really been focused on getting kids dual credits and, and, um, saving parents money that way. The orange box, box lists all the other dual credits that we offer at the high school. Outside of the ones that are in CTE courses. And then, um, Dr. Skinner and I met with COCC recently. And they introduced, um, they have something called a core transfer map where, uh. We're looking to piece together, we have a few students through GMH getting, um, their associate's degree. So we're, we're working on them to make that pathway cleaner and more user friendly. So more students can take advantage of that. And then they have this thing on the bottom, you'll see exploring COCC's core transfer map. That is, uh, a group of forty-five credits that COCC offers. That, um, covers the whole first year of a kid's college education. Um, so what happens with the associates is some, some students don't mind, I go all the way because they're like, oh, well, I don't want to waste my credits. It could impact their scholarship and their financial aid. The core transfer map they explained is that one year that. Nearly every college will take it. It's, it's those core credits can really save some, some students time. So we're really gonna focus on dialing that in so that every student from the time they walk into our high school, eighth grade coming into ninth grade. Um, we're either sitting down with them and saying, all right, if you want a CTE strand, uh, which ones do you want to explore for certification? Or do you want to try this? Um, core transfer map. So every kid that comes through the high school will have a plan and a pathway. Um, so I think that's a real exciting chapter. That's, that's just getting started.
I know I want to be pre-med. I'm probably not gonna get associate, like I'm gonna stay very focused. I want forty-five hours that I know I can take to the University of Oregon, Oregon State. Like I know they're gonna take that and I already know what I want to be. So those forty-five hours are solid. We know they're gonna be taken. Um, and so that's just another thing that we can do and we can do a little certificate for them in terms of, I have forty-five hours. And we can now, that graduation, we have forty-five hours, I'm gonna be able to be, you know, take those to whatever university and.
You also, when you have another meeting or check with Ben, can you verify their age requirements? Even though some kids can test to their levels because they were fifteen and sixteen. There was this hiccup with kids being able to take classes because of their age. And Jake, I think. Has dealt with some of those families. So we need to make sure that kids that can test to that level. Can start when they can test to that level.
Yeah, and I'm looking, we gave, uh, the high school gave out twenty-five hundred and forty-five. Credits, college credits last year. So that's definitely been where the focus has been. And I think I want to keep that because that saves our families. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. Then also couple that with, uh, these certifications. So, so I think.
Families that don't have kids that are going to college. Cause you're missing a whole sector of our kids that are not going to go to COCC and get an associate's or any of that. They want to go. Be a tradesman, whether that's a plumber, an electrician, a welder, whatever that may be, but four certificates compared to two thousand credits. You definitely have a mismatch of families that you're missing.
And I'm talking with, um, BTI today, talking about the, the jobs that if we line up these certifications, right, students can walk out of our high school and go get. An eighty thousand, hundred thousand dollar job. So, and that's really gonna help our, our students.
Having these meetings with our freshmen coming in so that we put them on the right tracks.
If, if I'm reading this chart correctly, is, is it's, is this next step for associates now and saying that we have these three classes? That all of our students went through this to potentially graduate within the house.
So our partners at COCC has, have mapped out.
Not three teachers, three classes.
Three classes.
Less than half of a full-time teacher.
Yep, and, and another option would be, we can offer those online. Um, so students.
That's why I keep saying intentional, like what is it exactly that we're missing that's gonna yield associate?
Huge if you just say, here's your path. Yeah, because I appreciate what you're saying and Jessica about. The missing CTE kids, but our, our paths for our college bound kids are not very clear either.
Some of these kids also just don't want to do extra school outside of this school. So you could actually get kids out with a. An associate out of high school, they would do it because they know they're already here for four years. They don't have to go back. So exactly.
The other thing I wanted to note about this, I love this. This is really clear. It's great work. Has the potential, you could get a degree in any one of these little categories. It's like construction management, commission hearing or whatever. So if you were to take this chart and expand it just a little bit. And add a drop-in box underneath where kids are on the academic, on the college bound track. And then add, these are the classes in addition to the core classes that you would need to take. You know, if you're gonna be in health sciences, you're gonna need some chemistry and some biology and stuff that is required, but is essential. And then get that, so in that idea for, for tracking your, your academics as well as your CTE. Depending on where your outcome is, that would be easy to do. And then add a catch-all for science-bound or arts-bound. Those are different tracks. You can really make this usable.
Like Joel, even on the construction science. Like with Oregon State, you can do, you know, CEM, construction, engineering, engineering, and then to put on there for the kids which. Which Oregon schools offer those programs and, and you're looking, you know, you've been going to Oregon State and finished your CEM degree.
Yeah, the small engines, I think they're taking twelve kids coming out. Like there's some potential things out here that we can totally, I mean, that's, I mean. We can get that certification rolling.
There's some, some real, I don't know, frustration there, but like, hey, why are we so down on, on, on certifications? And then as we've started piecing this together, we are so close to, to be almost a national model for, um, associates pathways.
We are working on that. We are so close to, when you're hearing how many hours, how many cert, like so many like one-offs, just I'm like. Oh my gosh, like we could be announcing kids' names, just coming in, going across that stage. And I told everyone, that is our goal at graduation. So and so certification, so and so associates, core completion, like we want something attached to every kid. It's not gonna happen overnight, but we are on it. Cause that is the goal.
One thing with the dual credits that I noticed with Wyatt, my, my son graduated with seventy credits. And he ended up graduating here in Oregon State, but he and I've heard my few others, sorry. Just something that I guess more to be aware of, but it, everything, he was. He had gone so far, but when he got there and he's like, technically a sophomore year, taking junior and senior classes, like, all right, this one you want. He's like, well, I'm not ready to make that choice yet. And again, I've heard, uh, he's not the only one that I've heard that, that just. I don't, I don't know what you do with that, other than I said, just making sure that there's a, something in place for them once they get there. Because he even ran into problems with trying to get an internship because his internship was supposed to be going into a senior year. Well, he graduated a year early, so he couldn't get it. And so I said, there's, I, there's two or three other people that I talked to ran into that same exact thing. But I don't, again, I don't know what. By the sophomore year, they're saying you have to pick your major based on your credit count. I'm too young, I don't know what I'm doing. So I mean, it's, it's a wonderful thing. I mean, it saved. But I just don't know. High credits for, I mean, high credit count. Of those little extra pieces of payment, you get there, you're gonna have to, I mean, you're on an accelerated pace. Yeah, you're not gonna sell it at night, but it's just something.
It pushes decisions before they're ready to make decisions.
Yeah, I don't know.
I wasn't ready to choose what I was gonna do as a high schooler, but I mean, I think it's good to channel kids in the right direction.
That was my other. And two years later, no.
And we may have that, but if we have some intentional conversations, we can start putting them in the right so that our senior year, we're not, oh, we gotta take twenty. Thirty hours and oh, you're not gonna regret, like, if we start early, they can, their sophomore year, you know what, like Jessica was saying, oh, I don't have a steady hand, like I don't want welding. Okay, maybe your goat milk, old college trailer, oh, you want to do something else? Well, you have some. Credits, you have some things that you've done, maybe not welding, but how about small engine? Like something like. We can find something, but if we don't start, we will not put you on the right, the right path.
But more just again, one of those conversations to have when you're having a conversation with those kids, you're going to have these issues. You're gonna run into these issues. Two years. And so let's be sure and work on a plan to get you past those issues.
So I think some of this will help with horizontal alignment too. Cause like, as I look at some of this, like middle school, we offer like. Sixth and eighth grade engineering, same thing and manufacturing, but. Like my son had to take engineering online. We don't have that at the high school. I think that is through Natalie. So it's like some of these. You, you know, these are really what's needed to get into these classes to get this or to. Certificate, it helps with aligning, like, well, then you may need to bring that back to an in-person or this. You know what I mean? Or make sure we offer it both ways.
Yeah, so I think this is, uh, the start of a basis and kind of organizing it, working document.
Start someplace, you're gonna have.
But yeah, we know, we look forward to continuing to bring this back to the board and report on. An extreme amount of certifications.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Three point six. Culture and some being united. Having fun out there. So I'm going to pass this around. So we've been talking a little bit about the come float away with me, which would be. The first day of school, serving our staff or your floats. Uh, if you would like to sign up, so it's just kind of a combination of a district's, um, office, a district staff person and then a board. So that we can, um, go out to a particular school, you know, together and serve. And then the other one to sign up for, um. Is National Pancake Day. And yes, we know it's the twenty-sixth, but because we have professional development on the twenty-seventh. We're going to do it on the twenty-seventh because it's Friday. We have just teachers, um, you know, in the buildings. And so there'll be less locations. Um, so more teachers at those locations. Um, but I will pass this around so that you can see who's already signed up in terms of district administrator. And if you will sign up, that way. Two different ones, come float away with me and then. Yeah, you got to.
For our breakfast and our root beer floats, um, four point O, school board update. I'm gonna refer to Joel.
Four point one committee, uh, appointments. So committee appointments, um, this has been an annual topic that the board, uh. You know, appoints their representatives. We've, uh, dug into policy, two policies in specific BCE and VCF. To really dig into what Paul, uh, our committee should be. And so we, we actually shouldn't be having a, uh, any standing committees. Policy is very clear on that. Um, so. Uh, it's gonna look a little bit different in what we need from the board. So one thing that's also updated is. All meetings of special committees appointed by the board. Well, we need to public notice to, to stay compliant with public meeting laws. So it changes a little bit about, um, how we've done things in the past. Um, particularly in your board packet, you'll see the Meadows Scholarship Committee. Uh, we highlight, we're gonna hold off on that one. Uh, traditionally, we've appointed people to that tonight. Um, because we know that this is a board appointed committee and we actually, uh, Anna and I dug into the resolution to see if there is any legal room on this. But it's a board appointed committee and because you're going through like student data and student names, we have to figure out. Cause if we're staying with public meeting laws, then we'd have to livestream that, but it's, uh, the board, you know, reviewing scholarship applications. So. We're, we're gonna hold off, um, figure out what we need to do for that Meadow Scholarship, um, committee. Our other committees that we have in the past, uh, so classified bargaining, certified bargaining. Calendar Committee, AP, uh, and Senior Year Opportunities Committee. Uh, this is one where the board, uh, this, at this time would make a motion to appoint. Uh, members to the committee, two per each. Uh members to the committee, two per each, um but also making sure that uh and we have kind of some uh guidance on a motion. Uh because in policy, the board has to say uh that the purpose of the committee, the members um. As well as uh, you know, how they, how the board wants the committee to to report back. Uh so in the past, we just kind of had these standing committees that when we look at policy is not the right way to do it. So um with that. We can move to classified uh bargaining committee, and I know that's actually still.
Yeah, I I wanna talk about the AP and Senior Year Opportunity Committee.
Yeah.
Based on what I just saw. In that presentation, the work that's going on is so far ahead of where the committee is at this point, but I'm not sure it makes sense to continue that committee. And I wonder if we should, for purposes of filling this page in, if we should just strike that, I don't know how others feel about it, but. Uh there's clear interest on like the part of the whole board to continue talking about this.
And Scott, one thing we we could do is just put that as every quarter, we we come back and provide a board report. Um so that way the whole board's staying in the loop on what's going on.
Anybody, any other discussion on the AP Committee? They wanna just have a report back to the board or do we wanna keep that committee?
I think this is a great start. Do we do bargaining every year?
It's uh, it depends on the contract. Sometimes we bargain a two-year contract, sometimes a three-year contract, sometimes we bargain reopeners.
What did we just bargain?
Next year it comes back.
We just had a re opener for certified. For the uh wage increase and salary cap. So it was just a re opener. Next year is a full, what they call successor bargaining for certified, which means the whole contract is open to negotiation. And right now we're still in negotiations for classified. Within their contract for this year, that's a successor, so a whole contract is open. Because we're still in process, we don't know yet how long that contract will be. We could be at the table again next year. It could be two years, three years, four years, it's whatever's negotiated in the contract for how soon we come back to classified. Classified has the potential to not reopen next year or bargain next year. So that would be. Something to think about. Certified, we definitely will do a whole contract uh this upcoming spring.
I would like to, because I'm currently on classified and we're still. We'd like certified.
All right, I'll do the calendar committee again.
Joel, did I miss you? Do we have a policy committee?
That was one in the past years ago that this board disbanded. Uh and it hasn't come back, but this would be the time that the board wanted to do that. That would be, this would be the time to do that.
What was the um? I think we have a big mess with policy.
So uh I think my recommendation would be on next Monday, we're all back here. Uh when Spencer Lewis from OSBA, the policy, their policy attorneys. Coming to help us uh sort sorting through some policies. We have a queue going. Tammy does an awesome job keeping a list of all the recommended policies. So maybe after that meeting, we'd be better informed to make a decision on how this board wants to move forward policy.
What meaning it's on the fourteenth?
That is Wednesday. Yeah, it is from four thirty to six thirty.
Superintendent working norms with Ross Hess.
So the nineteenth.
So I heard um the board's representatives for classified, certified and calendar committee.
Just, just ask the question. Next year, when are these happening? Is it close to when elections are? Are they gonna be done by elections?
Calendar, calendar committee is usually early spring, February. Winter, uh and then um classified bargaining probably won't happen next year. Certified bargaining certainly will happen, and that's usually around April, we start setting those dates.
Uh will you be here for certified bargaining?
Yeah, it'd start right around April.
But you know, staying in there and charged, then it will be like done in a week, so.
Jab at the rest of us and two of us.
Not me, I I got the calendar. Whatever, done.
On the clarify, I'm here that. Do you want two board members on each day or just one board member?
At least one.
You took my middle school spot.
Well, they're the only, I I have kids there at the high school and state high school, so. You're good. It's okay. You were first. You did right. You filled out. You got it. That's what happens.
Okay, so committee appointments.
So what I have down in tangs please, so classified will remain um Steve and Jennifer. Um certified will remain. We'll continue on Scott and Cheyenne, and then I guess that will be the. Uh the honor committee representative.
There were like two days after the rotation.
So that's, that's what we have. Um do we need a motion on that, Tammy?
Action, yes.
My motion to accept. Did everyone fill it in? Classified bargaining is Jen and Steve, certified bargaining is Scott and Cheyenne, calendar committee is myself. And we will wait on the Meadows Scholarship.
Yeah, we'll bring that back. We need a. Uh turning on just cause there's. A resolution that. That is a board committee, if we make it a board committee, we gotta livestream it.
I'm reading the motion. It says a nine-member committee consisting of two board members, three administrators, two teachers and two parent community members for the purpose of reviewing.
That would be if we're, if you're wanting to create that committee, so.
Like, yeah, sorry, I was like.
It it gets complicated if they're starting to create new committees, um but I I think for those three that we talked about, I think we're good. I mean, did you get the motion that you needed?
All right, so we have a motion to appoint said people to said committees. And we have a second on the table, so all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hogg.
Oh, you're up.
All right, uh four point two, OSBA Annual Convention, this is a quick one. Um we wanna give the board a long runway if you're interested in going to the fall. Um OSBA Annual Convention in Portland, uh that's November seventh through ninth, that's kind of the big annual convention. Um and then Tammy would be your point person if you need to, if you want to and want her to. You're gonna make the reservations and get registered and all that. So just wanted the board to be informed.
So veterans that weekend.
My finance report is basically a repeat of last year because again, this is for. Prior fiscal year, year. And um. It will, it will continue to change throughout um until the month, until the end of September, when I thought it was complete. Um and then next month in September, I'll give you a completely different report, but I just do once a year. I'll show debt, things like that, that you already, September's kind of a, just a. An off month where it's just really between fiscal years. Um and then. In October, I'll give you the first projection for the current fiscal year. I could start giving a projection now, but it would just be the budget, so it really wouldn't be as small. So I wanted to see if anybody has any questions on the financial report, and then I have kind of different topics just to.
I have one for you. On page one, at the very last line. Says miscellaneous revenues projected to be fifty percent below budget due to an increase in heavy equipment rental tax. I've never heard of that. What is that?
Well. I don't know a lot about it, but we started receiving it, I believe it was last year. Um and the amount of money that we received. Um it just started coming in, and so I I honestly didn't know anything about it. And so um what happens is. In your county. It's, it was a new, a new tax that was passed. Um and it had to do with when um people rent heavy equipment, this new tax was added on to it, and I believe it's collected by the county. Because the money flows through the county, so we receive it from Crook County and from Deschutes County. Because we have brothers school in Deschutes County, so we receive a small amount from Deschutes as well. And I, I don't know why it would have decreased so much, um but I base the budget off of what it had been at first. Don't know. I believe it was all of last year, um when it was happening, it could have been here before, uh just.
Cause your data center instruction stopped, but if you go back up, they could start now.
Yeah, it's a good thought. Yeah, so it was, the first year started coming in, it was something I hadn't planned on. And but again, that's run through state school fund formula, so it didn't have a huge, it doesn't really have a huge impact on us. It's just that when you're looking at it on this finance report. Because it dropped, it 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 shows under budget. Yeah, I I really don't know that much about it. I did read a little bit about it when it first came out, but I just didn't retain what it was because it wasn't that material. And uh. I'm thinking it was like two hundred thousand. If you wanna address the topic of modular buildings. It's really a facilities topic, but I'm bringing it to you as just a heads up. Because next month, we'll be asking for a decision. I'm talking about it because it really was something, I I'm the one who knows about how the money works. In twenty twenty one. The district entered into a three-year lease with three modular buildings at Creek County Middle School. There were some enrollment increases that were happening, some. Facilities issues that we were experiencing, and we were able to use S R funds to use these three buildings. And so. We, we were, or we, we put into place three modular buildings, which was a total of six classrooms. And uh we knew that at the end of three years, we would need a plan. And so we started thinking, way at the beginning, what are we, what are we gonna do at the end of three years? And we knew a lot could change, enrollment could decrease. You know, things could change, um but we know that our options are, we could leave those buildings in place and continue the lease month to month. We could purchase, we didn't know if we'd be able to purchase, but we hoped that we'd be able to purchase the modulators because in the long run, that's cheaper than continuing the lease. Um or we could have the modulars removed, have paid twenty four thousand dollars apiece to have them moved. And then we have to figure out. What's, how, what do we do with space? Um so as the years progressed, we had a situation in. Um I think, pretty sure it was the end of twenty two, twenty three, where we had savings in the general fund. With just a lot of unfilled positions. Um and we had additional revenue, investment earnings started to go up, et cetera. And so we. We ended up with extra money in the general fund, and so we moved a million dollars to the maintenance reserve to just sit there. So that when the time comes, we could either continue making lease payments with that money, or if possible, we could purchase those modular buildings. And so uh the the lease, our last lease payment on that three-year lease will be in September, this next month. And so we reached out to the company. And we were able to get a quote from them that we could purchase the buildings for two hundred twenty thousand dollars a piece. So it's six hundred. And we just purchased brand new modular buildings, there were five hundred thousand dollars. And so Leland did some research around just to kind of figure out what would use modulars cost, et cetera. And he determined that that is definitely a fair price. Um so. I know that six hundred sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money. If you scale it, it would be like if you were to scale it to a household, just to kind of try to make it. You know, more scaled to the school district. You, it'd be like if you were renting your house for three years. And then you had the opportunity to buy it for two thousand dollars. That's what this is like for us. If you were to scale an individual home income up to what's the school district's annual income is. Versus the price of six hundred sixty thousand. That's, that's kind of the scale that it's at. So we have a million dollars set aside in the maintenance reserve. We. Could purchase those modulars for six hundred sixty thousand, that gives us three hundred thirty thousand dollars. In savings that can stay in the maintenance reserve, we can use that money to do a short-term fix on the middle school roof. It won't be the, the, you know, the full replacement, but it'll get the leaking stopped. And then the rest of that, it it won't even take all of that, I think, or thirty thousand. So it can just stay in there for all of the other, either anticipated or unanticipated maintenance damage that pop up. So that's what we plan to bring to next one.
So you set aside two million dollars? Cause they used the million you set aside to buy the two modulars that just came in. So where is? The million that you've set aside for these three modulars at six hundred and sixty thousand?
Yes, we have two different million dollars.
So we had two million dollars in savings last year?
And one, one was from one year and one was from another year.
And they were both in the maintenance.
The.
The general funding that blew through.
Yes, it's all.
Then we saw the videos of in the middle school roof where the water was pouring down. Did that get fixed?
That's what she's saying. We can do that with the excess money of the second million dollars she put aside, so it hasn't been fixed.
So. But so before we fixed that, we had a million dollars in the maintenance fund that had been moved in general fund. So instead of fixing the lease or the the leaking roof. We bought the modulars.
Yes.
Okay, so the S R funds. How much money is left from the S R funds that like that we haven't used?
Zero.
Zero, we've used all of the S R.
We, we set aside enough S R funds to make the, all the payments on the modular buildings.
How much were the lease payments for the modulars for the last three years?
Twenty. Two fifty a month.
For each, so.
For each, so sixty. I don't remember if it's twenty two, I don't remember the exact amount. I think that the total for all three was sixty seven fifty a month.
It's down in seven hundred fifty.
No, sixty. Six thousand or sixty seven?
Six thousand.
Six thousand seven hundred fifty. I might be a fifty dollars off or something, but it's somewhere in that range.
I do not want to suggest, but I do wanna point out that. During COVID, we experienced a influx of enrollment because we were the only school district that was open and people were sending their kids here. And we also had to spread kids out because of the social distancing requirement, so we didn't have enough space in the middle school. So I don't know if we still today, based on enrollment counts, would need that much square footage, but I hope we can bring this back next month to begin enrollment.
I can tell you what the buildings are currently used to.
You the answer now. Next month.
Over the three years, we paid two hundred and forty three thousand dollars in lease payments for three modulars.
I would trust your math. Fifteen times twelve times three, and that's.
And we use, so we paid the two hundred and forty three thousand in lease payments out of the S R fund.
One of the. The guidance for S R funds was to. There was a lot of things you could do, but we were encouraged to find space. Who is. Spread out, we have enough, because if we hadn't had. The right square footage. Thirty-five square feet per student in every single classroom. We could not have been in person. And we have classrooms at the middle school where some of them are really small. And some of them are really large, but when you have groups of students going. and some of them are really large. But when you have groups of students going from period one, period two, you're kind of limited by how small, how many students can fit in the smallest classroom because you can't take a classroom where you can fit twelve students. And then, or thirty, you can't take a classroom with thirty-five students and then second, third, they have to go into, place it on the twelfth. So that's why we ended up shifting some things around and we ended up moving classrooms out to the modular buildings. And then we were able to have more equal sized classrooms off the building. But, and that's, you know, I was over there looking at the classrooms, but that's how it was explained to me.
But this will all be brought next.
Next meeting. Next meeting. Yep. And I know, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't rush and that you had enough time to ask questions and then and we honestly thought about bringing it to you this, this month because we want to make sure that we don't have to pay one more month or two more months of additional lease payments. I'd much rather purchase something and the fact that we have money set aside to do this, I don't like paying interest and so we don't have to borrow money to do this or anything. And so I, I feel very fortunate that we can do it like this.
Can I clarify? So if we chose to not pay by these and we paid the seventy four thousand, could you use the remainder of that a million dollars to do repairs within our district on buildings and other?
It's our money, yes.
So it's not going to be like it's operational and you can't use it to fix things. We're not in that boat.
Right.
You, you couldn't put it in operation. So you're.
I thought you said you couldn't mix.
That's on bonds. This is a bond. Remember, this went from the general fund to the maintenance reserve. So we can go backwards from that if that's your choice.
I thought I read on the S R funds that you can't build any new construction. And we put four point two million dollar, how much did it pioneer cost? And was that considered new construction? Cause we used S R funds for that.
You had, you had to get pre-approval to do capital.
But it was highly discouraged on the, in the S R funds.
Go back and find the communication possibly somewhere.
So the million dollar savings was in twenty one and twenty two, and then we had another million dollar savings in twenty two, twenty three.
Twenty, twenty two, twenty three was the first one where we set aside the million dollars for this. And then twenty three, twenty four was last year, and that's where we had an additional million dollars between savings and investment funds, which I misunderstood your question from last week, but I understand it now. We had investment earnings that we did not plan for, and we had savings last year. And so I believe we just bought those modulars out of the general fund. I can't remember if we moved the money to the maintenance reserve. They're both, they both are funds that start with a one. They're both one hundred level funds that roll to each other.
With all the S R funds, I, I just still cannot get over the Pioneer buildings for four point two million. If you have sixty kids and a quarter of those kids go to Grizzly Mountain, did we put any of that S R money to Palview?
Yes. Yes, we agree.
Was it equalized? Cause if you take like the sixty kids at Pioneer and minus the kids that go to Grizzly Mountain, and then what's that enrollment stack stacked next to like, how do you?
Probably not equalized.
Actually, you did do a calculation to see what is the fair share. And there was an allocate, an attempted equitable allocation.
It was based on A D M.
Right.
For Palview. It wasn't.
Did some math on that.
It wasn't for Pioneer.
Right, for.
And really the, the, the impact that Pioneer had was not sixty kids. It also had, counts all of the Steen's pillar kids as well because they were, they were in the Steen's pillar building. And the, the really, the impetus was we needed to expand Steen's pillar. So there, it, there are only sixty to eighty kids at Pioneer. So I understand how it appears that that was just an impact of sixty kids, but you also need to consider the two hundred fifty kids at Steen's pillar as well.
So since it seems like we have the money to repair the middle school roof, could we get that moving before we hit winter again? Cause I thought last year we didn't patch it because we didn't have the funds. So if we have the funds regardless of which way we go, why are we not repairing the middle school roof?
Yes. We are working on it already. It's already in process. We didn't want to patch the roof because that's you don't want to do duct tape if you can, if you can replace something. That's but we have to. So absolutely, we're going to. Yes.
Leland, do you have something to add?
So we made a quick repair to that roof. So would we get the one scupper that was actually coming down the wall? But you can't repair a roof in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
So we had to wait till this spring to actually even start the process of acquiring bids and doing all the work to do that. So we do have bids. I'm ready, getting ready to accept the bids on that. But all it's going to do is repair the trough and the scuppers where that problem existed. The rest of that roof will still need to be restored or repaired at later days. It'll leak again.
Yeah.
Not the same place, but it'll leak again.
Yeah.
Wondering if it's, you know, it'll, it'll water.
Okay, so we will look forward to that next month. Thank you very much. Any more discussion of that? Okay, um, we're going to move to six point O public comment follow-up. And I do have one from last month in regards to the syllabi. All C C M S and C C H S syllabi will be posted to the courses Google Classroom and sent home to parents. A copy of every syllabi will be available in the curriculum office for any interested community member. But it'll be online.
Um, no, I asked, Dr. Skinner said, no, it's only going to be at the district.
Okay.
Why, why isn't it going to be online?
I don't know.
They've always been online.
Except this year, we took them off and they never got put back.
It's in policy.
Copy of it.
Well, what's wrong with being online is the whole public can see.
Yes, we can.
They've been online for
That's what's.
A decade.
I don't know if that's.
That was not in here.
I was. Hope that wasn't on the.
We didn't hit them back last year. They weren't. That's correct.
Let me see if we can clarify this for staff which can't seem to get it. I moved the director superintendent's put the syllabi online.
So did that happen last year?
That's a motion. Is there?
It didn't happen last year, but he's making, I second that.
We have a motion on the table to put the syllabi online. Right.
Yes.
And we have a second. Do we have discussion? I guess I didn't know it wasn't online. I, at some point.
Apparently it was online. Then we took them down to revamp them, but they never got put back online. Last school year, you could only get them through Google Classroom if you had a child. You couldn't go online and look at a syllabi, which is in our policy.
It is in our policy to have none of them. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Shouldn't need this motion, but apparently it is.
They know we need neither. Okay, um, so we have a motion and we have a second and we've had discussion. Any more discussion? Um, all areas in favor of putting the syllabi back online, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh, moving on to, um, seven point O public comments. I have to read a quick slur. I'll read this stuff clean. If you wish to make the public comment, please complete a comment part prior to the start of public comments. I have two up here. If you're viewing online, please indicate that you would like to speak in the comment section. When you're recognized, please state your name and any group you're representing. Keep your comments to no more than four minutes. A group of visitors with a common purpose should designate a spokesperson for the group. If you wish to request that a board consider an agenda item, please contact the superintendent at least one week prior to the next board meeting. And the board does not hear complaints against any personnel in open session. If you have a complaint about a specific staff member, please contact the superintendent, superintendent or the board chair. Survey sets. Mr. Curville. You are up, sir.
First of all, I'd say, uh, Steve, I wouldn't ignore you at the fair.
Oh, well.
I was busy. I did get a chance to talk to most of you. I appreciate that. And the kids were great this year. Uh, I was, I'm, I'm curious. I heard something while I was at the fair, you know, you guys are looking for, uh, areas to shoot shotgun, range and so forth for that. That was offered by, uh, the Breezes. And I thought they were going to go ahead with that. It sounded like it was a good deal. And then I heard that it was changed because somebody made the comment that the Breezes were going to make money off of it. So they dropped it sort of like a hot rock. I was wondering if you guys know about this because you, it was brought to you to be in with. And they're looking right now at a range that's further off. And I just happened to, it is in a fire zone, which is not a good deal because it's up Jennifer Canyon.
And this is a trap bug?
The, the shotgun. Yeah, the trap, you know, which is a good thing. I won't get into the story, but I tried to get a gun range around here. A few years ago, I had five people involved, including B L, uh, B L M, and they granted an area to shoot in. They knocked the fence down. They put in gravel and then there was a person near there that was from California and they lived up here six months out of the year. And they said, we'll sue you if you put it in. They dropped that like a hot rock too. Otherwise you'd already have a range if they hadn't have dropped that. So I was curious about that. Do you, have you guys heard anything on that?
It came, it came to the board as a discussion, I believe.
Reference it's making.
Yeah, Crooked River. I remember it came up.
Yeah. And the Breeze is actually offered area.
Uh, we were in favor of it.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I do remember it coming. I believe we're at Crooked River. Is that where we were when?
At the middle.
At the middle school. Yeah, when it came up and I mean, I'm, I'm in Denver for that, but I think it goes through the district and then comes back to the board. So that would be a follow-up. Jen is who made the decision to not take the Breeze's land. So I think we were in support of taking
Yeah.
the land that was offered.
Right, issue with the, the public and the private and, I remember something about.
Now there was insurance issue that we got cleared up, I believe on policy. Do you remember that?
And I like to do my research and be prepared and go back and figure out.
Yeah, and that's one thing I think we'll do is we'll, we'll make sure that we, you know, I've conversed with Dr. Skinner on it. We'll go back, see where it dropped off.
Yeah, because I got this from a pretty good source.
Okay.
The other thing I was going to bring up too, is I'd like to see the Ten Commandments put back up in the schools. I don't think there would be anybody in here that'd be against that. My understanding was it was taken down because the kids might read it and obey it. That's my understanding, whether or not that's, and that was from Washington, uh, Board of Education. D C, not state, which is probably pretty typical. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Ravenberg. Oh, there you are. You're up, sir.
Thanks, Doctor. Nice to see you. Uh, Jack Ravenberg. Uh, citizen, um, grandparent for ten days while my granddaughters are here in town. And, uh, I wanted to express, uh, my appreciation for the board and the elements of, um, the, um, bond special meeting that we just had five days ago now. Yeah. Um, dedicated, uh, uh, an hour was set aside for it. And I think we were here for almost two and a half hours. Um, some very good information was exchanged. I appreciated the fact that, uh, all of the board members participated and, uh, the, uh, the concerns of, uh, some of the citizens that were present, I think were heard, even though we weren't allowed the opportunity to speak, uh, in that manner. Uh, I appreciate the fact that the board allows, uh, for public comment. Um, I go back to, I think it was twenty eighteen was the first school board meeting that, uh, I attended. Joel, I think you were a, uh, principal at, uh, the high school at the time. Another, uh, there was an entirely different board at that time, except for Mr. Cooper. And, uh, I would, I would venture to say that in the, in the time period that I've attended these school board meetings at various locations, that, uh, the last, uh, six, five or six, um, school board meetings have been, uh, uh, quite, um, informative. Uh, I've appreciated the, um, the, uh, I, I I hesitate to use the word camaraderie, but the willingness of each of the board members to, um, listen, to hold civil, uh, discussion. You may not agree with each other, uh, a hundred percent of the time, but you seem to be able to work together. And I would offer a commendation in that regard. And I would once again offer my, uh, appreciation to Dr. Skinner for accepting the position. And I, I think, uh, from, at least from my perspective of the, uh, last couple of meetings that she's participated in, I would think that, uh, there are good things on the horizon for our school district. So thank you for the opportunity.
Um, just real quick, um, upcoming dates and I'll whip through these, um, school board superintendent work session, August fourteenth, it's from four thirty to six thirty here. School board work session, August nineteenth, four thirty to eight thirty here. School board retreat, August twenty sixth, four to eight here. Open house at the elementary schools is August twenty ninth, four thirty to six o'clock. Open house for the middle and high schools is September third from four thirty to six. First day of school for first grade through sixth grade and ninth grade is September third. First day of school for grade seven through eighth and tenth to twelfth is September fourth. First day of school for kindergarteners is September ninth. And then we have a school board meeting, September ninth here at the district office at six thirty. And at this, we're going to join our meeting. Thank you all for coming.